Let's call the order.
Idan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Mazur.
Here.
Methvin.
Here.
And Carrier.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we welcome our visitors. We're gonna switch around a couple things. We're gonna let Eric Bassett go first. So he has a meeting to get to, so we'll do that first.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I think what I want to talk about tonight was we were busy with spring break. We ended up getting ready to mow lower and blew eighty-some yards of mowers around the building into the courtyard. A lot of it ended up being in Willburrow because the company had some enough hoes. They couldn't get enough hoes for us. So about two days shoveling in Willburrow and about half a semi-hoads, so pretty busy. Been busy mowing. Apparently, there's been fertilizer spraying here at the school and that's for multiple properties. Building's very busy right now. Building use forms. I think Mr. Altman's finding out, being administrator, it's hard to find stuff in month of May for an open date or anything. Whether or not during the day, in the evening, weekends, I mean, weekends are okay so far, but it's pretty busy. So also have the generators been serviced just recently and everything looked good. They just, they did recommend to have something done, which will get done here soon. Also, we had a fire marshal inspection a couple weeks ago. Actually, two inspections. They had one for this school and then one for the new building, the, uh, before we can actually go into it. They, we passed everything. No write-ups whatsoever. They do have to come back for nine to one for the new addition before we're able to occupy it. Currently, we're a little short staff on custodial. Kind of use some custodians around to get some stuff done. So gonna do that for the rest of the school year. Kind of hard to do interviews, hire somebody, despite having two weeks' notice and then get hired one school hose, so, for the summer. So kind of hold off until the summer. Talked with Mr. Countryman on plans for that. Look at the benefits of maybe having a full-time employee year-round, paired a, a full-time and a part-time while entering the school year. See what was more advantageous for our department and for the district when it comes to talk. Also, the new building, a lot of extra work, a lot of meetings, being on tons of contractors on a daily basis, weekly basis all the time. Been working on getting quotes for the exterior of the painting of the building, the existing school building, for the smooth face block. And we're with three companies right now. Hopefully have three quotes this week. Also, been dealing with Science State Route Two maybe in addition to it. So working with quotes on three companies for the work. That would be done to have that up and running if, I guess, approved by the building for a good night at four p.m. meeting. Also, we, due to budget restraints and COVID, we did not do the normal repainting and restriping of the asphalt around the building, the fire, the parking lots, nothing's been restriped. Actually, I had a text message from somebody saying the line frame isn't visible in the parking lot anymore. How often do we do them? And I tried to explain to him what it was. But I did get quotes from a couple companies on having all that done. I thought while the asphalt was being done to eighteen and all the asphalt around on the new addition, maybe that companies are gonna have their equipment here. They might be cheaper than they were. Never found anyone cheaper than we normally go with. I got prices for them to re-strike, refill in all the tracks, reseal everything. And then we haven't had anything done to any of the parking lots. So two venues, you know, figured the parking lots were done in late 2008. And it's worked on thirteen years now. And there's a few thousand square feet that they recommend mowing down. And some of us have duty grades, some of us medium duty grades for car traffic, some of us main drive. Also includes whitening, an area, I think it's four foot wide by like a hundred seventeen foot long, kind of make that an actual three lane. It gets really congested there. People are fighting back and forth right in that area. A lot of areas in the parent pickup loop and the main of that parking lot up front, they milled down. And I know it's on the board agenda tonight for you guys to approve, for a little basketball to do that work. Also, I know Mr. Hawke's been working with the basketball court being redone this summer. We didn't do that last year in the main gym because of budget cuts. And also, it's been a long time since planes are there, so they're talking about repainting those. That's for you guys to approve at midnight. And then also, we have a lot of concerns for baseball plays down there in park. And the baseball bleachers are probably the most hazardous things you could probably ever be on. They never pass Euro One's comp. Inspection by any means for safety life building. And I know Mr. Hawke asked John and I to look at them and, I don't know, where he started, where he stopped. I'm just starting over. Got some flights from a couple of other companies and Mr. Hawke has something for you guys to talk about. Then also, we've been busy cleaning. Got all the schedules kind of set up for the summer, cleaning this building. And urgent delivery for the new building. We're doing all that unloading and installing. So that's the week of July twenty-sixth. Been working with Joey and Chris. They've been very nice and spent a lot of extra hours back there, painting the murals in the weight room. And also laid out the area today. They got one area in the wrestling room they have to do. And then the mural in the beef wire up front. We're getting deliveries all the time for looking to cover for Lucas. Just had the washer dryer, refrigerator delivered for the field house for the little workroom there, the washer dryer, and then the refrigerator for the community room. So that was delivered today. And we're just kind of waiting so we can install amongst the contractors. So it's okay. Had all the TV mounts come in. I know those TVs come in, which are shaped for work, but we gotta install those in the new building too, so been busy, busy.
So I just have to say, I'm so excited that that, the area, when you exit the school and you go east, that you're not driving in the dirt.
Yeah, you have to drive.
It's driven me nuts.
Yeah, there's been potholes there from the track a little over the drive.
Oh, yeah.
And then John and I put stone in there and then they drive over the stone. That's up leaving and right now we got mud holes again.
So I'm so excited. That'll look nice and, you know, match everything else. And thank you for all your work with the new building and we just can't thank you enough. So really appreciate it.
I hope you have a quiet meeting tonight.
I hope you do. Six o'clock meeting council is open. Supposed to be my cell meeting today.
Well, we're glad we could get you in early.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Erica Willitzer with the Defiance County Economic Development.
Hi. Well, I replaced Jerry in January, so it's very nice.
Why don't you give her the mic?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I replaced Jerry. He retired after twenty-one years and I'm excited to be here and to be able to come to more meetings with different projects. The project that I'm here in regards to is for Blessed Capital LLC in Hicksville. And they are asking for approval of this community reinvestment area, CRA. They are going to be doing some remodeling totaling ninety-five thousand dollars. And they're asking for an extension term of seven years at seventy-five percent. As far as their net savings per year, it would be eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And then over the seven-year period, it would total seven hundred and fifty-three dollars for donation for the school, a hundred and eighty dollars per year for, for the donation. So what we're asking for tonight is a resolution for support of this project and the CRA. And then we would also need to have the waiver of notice signed. And I do have some copies, and I'll pass them around, of what, if you guys approve, what we'll send to the council for approval. But again, that all depends on what you guys decide. And then here's what the waiver looks like. You guys have to email them too.
What was that donation amount, Erica, for the school?
So the school, for the over the seven years, it was total seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. And then per year it'd be a hundred and eight.
Is that what we, okay. So they included that in our packet, so that's awesome. And, 'cause I didn't have time to look it up. Is this the old waiver building? Is that what we're gonna come up with?
Yes.
I have no objections at all.
I don't need an answer tonight. I, you guys can discuss it however you need. That's fine too. Are there any questions on the project?
But you need the resolution by when?
Well, I know that he wants to start sometime in May. And then also wants the, I forgot to mention this, completely completed by the, by the fall, so in September.
Okay.
Yes, we can, we can absolutely do the resolution tonight.
Well, there's nothing else for me. Thank you guys. And I'm working on several different projects that I haven't really come to ahead yet, where I'll, I'll be reaching out to Mr. Countryman and going over those. But there are some projects in the works in Hicksville. There's a lot of things happening. And I'm really excited. Despite the pandemic, business is, is happening and I'm really enjoying the position so far.
Good.
Did you say you had some language for a resolution? Did I hear you say that or not? Oh, it's...
We have the waiver.
We have the waiver. He can send you the resolution. Would she, I...
Absolutely.
I think we have those.
Okay.
I just thought if we were gonna try to vote on it today.
Right.
Yeah, I just put, I just put that we're, uh, we'll approve the resolution for the CRA program for Blessed Capital LLC. I think that'd be good enough or nice if I'm the note taker.
And then I can give the template and send it to you.
Yeah, yeah. If you guys are good and comfortable with that.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, you would.
Yes, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Okay.
And Galen with second.
And this is to do both the resolution and the waiver of notice for the Blessed Capital LLC with the seventy-five abatement of the real property taxes for the seven years vested and presented. The resolution's not gonna really look all that different from our waiver that we have either. So any comments or questions? Roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
Idan?
Yes.
Mazur?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five, zero. All right, we're happy.
So then Erica, if you, I'll get that stuff to you and you give me the...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, moving right along. Prince Holes, let's start with you, Jeff.
All right, happy Monday, everyone. Only one more Monday left in the school year, so exciting times. All right, so of course, HHS along with the rest of the school, we've completed all our, of our end-of-course assessments for the school year. I need to thank our students and parents for the excellent attendance because it's amazing. You know, we communicate to them how important it is to be here for those testing times and dates. And our kids were awesome this year. I mean, I don't know if we had four or five kids that missed any testing days total. I mean, it was a great attendance for our students, based on the high school side, so I apologize for the middle school. I mentioned the school side, it wasn't quite like that. And of course, shout out to all of our teachers for being flexible. You know, our one-to-one proctors, our small group proctors, our guidance counselors, and of course, Mrs. Welling. It truly is amazing how many woman and man hours are put into this. And, you know, it just, it all happens because all of us are invested in this, so we appreciate everyone's effort. Of course, proms is success this year. We had an excellent turnout for the event. I want to thank all of our class advisors, our parent volunteers, our post-prom team. We went over to Georgetown Bowl for bowling, video games, billiards, and of course, the best part, according to some, endless pizza and pop. It was amazing how much pizza some of these kids could eat. I'd like to thank, of course, the administrative team and of course, our PTO for putting on a successful Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, it's, it's always a tough time in May because things are so chaotic. But I thought, you know, Mrs. Daniels and Mr. Countryman and everyone came together, good plan, and of course, the PTO makes us all look good. So sometimes we get, sometimes we get a little bit of credit for that, but it's not us, it's the PTO. The top ten percent of Class of 2021 attended the annual Rotary Luncheon last week. I want to say congratulations to Boston Hoobman, Ivy Ramagen, Landon Turnbull, Madeline Fredericks, Kelsey Monroe, Lena Bassett, Chloe Gerhart, who is our salutatorian, Haven McAlexandra, and Colin Dury, who are co-valedictorians. Great group of kids. They did a nice job at Rotary. You know, it was nice to be back at Rotary because last year, unfortunately, the Class of 2020, they didn't get that opportunity. It's always a good time. The spring sports schedules have reached tournament play. I know our girls softball team is already out. But, um, you know, our baseball team and our track teams, they are competing this week. And again, good luck to all of them. On Tuesday, May eighteenth, which is tomorrow, we have our house celebration for the victorious Karaji House. Students will be transported to Fort Wayne's Combat Ops for an enjoyable day of activities and fun. On Thursday, May twentieth, HHS will have a field day to celebrate a crazy but great year. I think everyone's ready to get outside. The weather's finally turned and we all want to enjoy that. That is a teacher-led event. This is the first time we've done that this year. You know, it's kind of one of them things where, you know, we kind of lost out on a few days where, you know, the Christmas Fun Day and a few other events, so we're kind of making up for it now. And of course, Thursday, May twenty-seventh is the mandatory commencement practice, which will be followed by our traditions of the senior cookout and of course, the seniors' final walkthrough. And as a reminder, I'm gonna pass these out. These are all the updates that have been sent out to all of our students, our parents, four counties. They've been instant alert with a link to Google Docs. They've been mailed home. We're doing our best to communicate kind of the events for commencement, the dates and important times for all of our seniors. But again, we still get phone calls every day, but we'll continue to do our best to advertise these items. You guys want to look this over? If you have any questions, please ask. As of right now, we're still at capacity limits. So our students are gonna get six tickets apiece to attend commencement. And then outside of that, we're expecting a regular commencement ceremony. I will say that typically Mr. Bassett's group, you know, again, this whole Memorial Day commencement's been kind of weird in the effect it's had on our schedule. But he'll be setting up next Monday, the twenty-fourth. At that point, myself and my wonderful Mrs. Welling, my, uh, my, my boss here at work, will go down and try to make sure to establish and set up a, a nice setup for our seniors. So the family, the parents, you know, the family members can view the commencement ceremony the best they can. And then it's gonna be set up different than normal. But at the same time, it's going to be, it's gonna go very well. And I, and I will make sure to share with everyone the expectations. Because I will say that when the kids come to get their diplomas, to make it flow and look nice, there's gonna be a little bit of a setup there. That's gonna be a change from normal, but I'll train you guys and we'll be just fine. Any questions?
You said you were gonna train us, right?
Yes. It'll be so easy. You'll be amazed.
This isn't a question, but Ron and I got to help with senior project judging last week. And I don't know about all of them, but the four adults that were in my group, the kids did a wonderful job. Really, really good job. We were impressed.
Well, it's good to hear that. And then one other item, I guess, if you didn't see this, these are the Class of 2021 masks. Every student will receive one of these at commencement. And I actually have enough to where if each one of you would like to have one, we have one also. Mr. Countryman, of course, Kirsten and Mike and everyone else helping out with the event, so.
All right, Ms. Kaufman, you're next.
Two of them. Stereo here. A surround sound. Kindergarten through fourth grade students were able to offer summer school this year. And so I did, I had the teachers invite students that they felt would benefit from summer school. And so an instant alert went out on Friday as well as this evening. And through a Google form, the parents can complete, just showing the interest to see where we're at. I'm hoping to finalize everything by May twenty-first so I can start moving forward. But we have certified teachers that will be teaching these sessions. And they will either be a Monday, Wednesday session or a Tuesday, Thursday session, session from nine-thirty to eleven here at the school through the month of June. Kindergarten and first grade program is scheduled for next Thursday in the high school gymnasium. Kindergarten will be performing at five-thirty and first grade will be performing at seven o'clock. On Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, our fourth grade students, along with Mrs. Chamberlain and Mrs. Montgomery, are going to get to the, go to the gymnasium without teachers to meet with the fifth grade students to be able to have a little Q and A time to find out what it's really like to go from an elementary schedule to a middle school schedule. So thanks to those ladies for putting that together. And since it's been a crazy year already, we've decided to change up the way that we are doing awards this year. We have decided to celebrate each class individually with a half-hour celebration out in the front. And that is scheduled for next Friday, or not, yeah, not this Friday, next Friday, May twenty-eighth. We'll be enjoying ice cream cups, bubbles, writing little inspirational notes with chalk on the cement. And every child will receive an envelope of completing that grade level. And inside that envelope will, will be their individual awards, so we're not calling names. And some children aren't getting awards. But in that envelope will also be a letter from their teacher and then a letter from, a student from the grade that they're going into, just kind of welcoming to that next grade. And then we still plan to meet our teachers on the last day of school. And then the last thing, Mr. Bergman along with our wonderful PTO will be hosting Fun in the Sun on Tuesday, June first. Every grade level will get to participate in about an hour worth of field day activities. Just closing up the school year.
Very exciting. How are we funding this summer school program?
Through the ESAR grant.
I love the awards program idea.
I love Mrs. Montgomery. She just, you know, I give, I give her an idea and she just kind of runs with it. And so I just think it will be fun that every kid is celebrated. And that every, every child will have something in there that's, you know, from their teacher and from another student, so.
I like that a lot.
I do too. All right, Mr. Altman.
The sixth grade had a successful Hicksville shake this year. I want to give a big thank you to all the staff that helped out, along with our community members that donated their time to make the shake happen. Ms. Reese and Mrs. Zachrich have been doing a great job with our science club this year. They've had many successful meetings and are taking their students to the Penny Nature Preserve after school on Tuesday. After school, yeah, on Tuesday. They also have their annual eighth-grade trip for fossil garden plan for Friday. There will be students that will have some hands-on experience with the eighth-grade curriculum. It's neat that the students can still go outside, enjoy field trip outside and still feel good. This is Mr. Klausine's first year of the seventh and eighth grades through the council. He's been doing an awesome job. Mr. Klausine has been really listening to his students, trying to figure out what they wanted to do to help improve our middle school. Some of the ideas they have is they planned and are currently carrying out a dot-well tournament to make their intermural time more fun. They're also working on a student ambassador training program where the seventh grade members will work with Mrs. Chamberlain during home base. And they'll receive training on how to welcome a new student to the junior high. That way, each student is getting the, you know, successful welcome and a tour of the school properly. And then Mr. Chamberlain's rocks end of the year celebration will be this Friday for all the seventh grade girls. Mr. Schach, Mr. Klausine, Mr. Tier have donated their time to create fun, exciting things for the seventh grade boys to do during that time. And then at the conclusion, the sixth and seventh grade students will be listening to a guest speaker in the high school gym about how to be a leader in our middle school.
Okay, side note, did you know that Penny Nature Preserve was donated by the owner of J.C. Penney's in honor of his wife, Penny?
Makes sense where the name comes from.
To do for you.
The sixth grade shake was great. Well organized, great to watch the kids.
Thank you. They, uh, they seem to really love it and they really excel at this great shake. They do a great job.
I love all the programs. You guys do such a great job, just involving the kids and bettering them and providing for them.
Mike, were there other schools in the county that did the shake?
Just recently, I think it was Strang, No Swann, is going to do theirs for their eighth grade class, I believe. They're the only ones that I know that are doing theirs.
Nobody else in Defiance County did it this year?
I don't believe so. I reached out to all of them early on in the school year and no one got back to me that year.
I love that you did it then especially.
Thank you.
I especially love it.
Because, I mean, a few years ago, I mean, we kind of had that county wine competition. And is it because of COVID or they don't see the benefit?
I'm assuming because of COVID. I know there's been a lot of turnover in the principal positions in the middle schools or at those schools. So that could also have been a major reason why.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, yeah, you have to have that buy-in, but gosh, that's such a great program.
It is.
I mean, you saw how awesome the kids do.
I love it.
The teachers have put them up well for it.
I'm serious. I think there'd be a lot of adults that, given the tasks the kids had to do, would have been standing there like, ah.
I liked, you know, I was following on Facebook and stuff. It was neat, you know, seeing the progression, so.
It was amazing.
They're very professional little kids. This is pretty neat.
Yeah.
Okay. I do not have a four-county Career Center report, so we'll move on to Mr. Countryman, your superintendent report.
Okay. I was gonna mention the top ten percent at Rotary, but Jeff, he got that, so thank you, Mr. Slattery, for that. New building update, the HVAC is still waiting on a couple pieces for the big part of the gym. That should be coming, well, they keep saying any day, but they're a little irritated. The construction guys are a little irritated with the company, but they say it's on the way. The epoxy floors in the locker rooms and restrooms should be poured later this week. Once they are poured, they will then install the shower equipment and set the toilets. Weight room floor will also be stored later, uh, poured later this week. And then the weight room will come in after that so that it's not taken across the gym floor before that, it'll be done before that's poured. Once the gym floor is poured, obviously, there's no more lifts in the building. Scoreboards were delivered. The high-density storage system was delivered today as well. So I'm assuming they'll get those installed right away. They were already unpacking things today when, when it came and I was out there, so. And then Eric also mentioned that Chris and Joey will be painting murals in the wrestling room and in the entrance to the gym area. So they did the one, as you know, the two in the weight room. There'll be one that just says aces in the, um, uh, wrestling room. And then the entrance to the main gym, there's a big, big H with aces across it that'll go up, out there. According to the governor's latest announcement today, information that I got from the county health nurse, all safety measures such as masks and social distancing will remain in effect here at the school through the remainder of this school year. I've not received any news on what things might look like in the fall. So hopefully it's different. Any questions for me?
No, but just one last thing. I did enjoy the art show, the boot scoot back from the track meet. And I'm always amazed at how much Chris was going over how he stuck pretty much with pencils so the kids would be at the desk. And they got so good at shading and I was, I was blown away at the talent of these kids.
They always do a real professional job. It looked really nice, yeah.
They, they invested much time in that art show as well and helping them set up. Your place statues going out there sort of spots. Mr. Gang was actually able to know which place statue belonged to which student. It's amazing how much time that everybody puts in his work.
And he had things also there. There were some things that the kids didn't get to complete last year. So he had them come back. They came, some of them came on their home base times and completed their projects. So he had things from 2020 and 2021 there. So I thought that was pretty special for him to do that too, so. And the kids were happy about it, so, yeah.
Okay, if you don't have anything else, we'll need a motion for minutes and financials.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Craig, Steph, thank you. Administering the regular board meeting on April nineteenth of 2021. Treasurers consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of April thirtieth of 2021. Financial statements for April 2021. Amended certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2021 as presented. Total general fund resources to fourteen million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand and sixty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Total resources of all funds of twenty-five million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Amended fiscal year 2021 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of eleven million, nine hundred, eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents. And total appropriations for all funds of twenty-one million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars and thirty cents. Authorize the treasurer to enter into the Ohio School Comp Group retrospective grading workers' compensation program administered by Comp Management Sedwick as the district's third-party administrator, TPA, effective with the policy year beginning January first of 2022. Authorize the treasurer to renew the current agreement with Sheekly Unicomp as the district's workers' compensation managed care organization, or MCO, for an additional two-year policy period effective July first of 2021. Approve fiscal year 2021 five-year forecast as presented. Cash balance as of June thirtieth, 2025, or line seven point zero two zero, of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Accept the following donations: one hundred and fifty from Johns Manville for high school boys' basketball; one hundred and eighty-six from BSN Sports for track; two hundred and thirty-four dollars from BSN Sports for high school boys' basketball; three thousand from the Hicksville Rotary Club for temperature kiosk; a robotic etching and cutting robot from Dave Ashton for the STEM program; and various memorial donations honoring Randy Sweet.
So Mike has, uh, as you know, he's not here, but he gave me copies of the five-year forecast, which I put down... So Mike has, as you know, he's not here, but he gave me copies of the five-year forecast, which I put down for all of you. What he wanted me to point out was that the, if you notice on the cover page, this one here, just a little ways downward, the boulder print, that he has projected that we will end this year 183,000 to the good, which is a good thing. And then 2022, he shows us deficit spending of 130,000 for that year. Now, keep in mind also that the Esser three money's not here, so that's going to help out in that area too. So I'm not sure if he has that included in this or not, but I, I'm not, I'm not positive if he does. On this front page also, on this graph right here, this one here, the high amount for the one bar is the school income tax. And the way that's collected, there's a, we're at that surge right now where that came in. So it's really still balancing out from when it started. And that's representative of that boost. Following, it kind of mellows out. There's not an increase each year because, you know, it's balanced out. But the amount we're getting for those levies is listed, let's see, where is that? Just shy, I think it was like 900,000 if I remember correctly.
Are we talking about income?
Yeah.
Tax level or line 1.030?
There we go. You see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this says ending cash balance with levies or without levies. So when is it that we have to have a levy approved again or renewed or when is that?
That would be spring of 2024, we would renew that levy again.
So the spring of 2024 and it would just be a renewal?
Right. No new tax.
For the three quarter.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And he said that if you have other questions, to be sure, and email him and he'll get those answers to you. Okay?
I'm glad you told him to go. That's where he should be.
Yeah, exactly. Parent night, you should not miss that. So we, that's one thing we always say around here, is family is more important than anything else. And there's only one senior night, and when there's only one daughter, he should be there, so.
If there's ten daughters.
That's right. That's right.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ayden?
Yes.
Mazler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Need a motion for employment of certified staff?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mindha and Steph, thank you. Recommend to approve the following as substitute teachers for the 2021 school year. Dennis Seibin, Seibeneck? Seibeneck and Camden Yoder. Recommend to non-renew the following contracts at the conclusion of the 2021 school year. Brianna Color, Kate Hagerty, Melissa Miles, Kayla Better, and Stacy Wagner. Recommend to non-renew all certified supplemental contracts at the conclusion of the 2021 school year or at the end of the activity. Recommend to approve the following as middle school summer instructor for one week in August of 2021. Amber Zachrich at 28.94 cents per hour, not to exceed 45 hours. Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Madison Stockman as classroom teacher with zero years' experience at a bachelor's degree for the 2122 school year. Recommend to approve the following as special education instructor for the 2122 school year. Stacy Wagner, $29.67 per hour, not to exceed one hour per day. Recommend to approve the following as substitute teachers for the 2122 school year. Michaela Bauer, Cassie Brown, Ed Foster, Paul Overmeyer, Kevin Snyder, Nancy Swift. Recommend to approve the updated certified substitute list provided monthly by NWO ESC for the 2122 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2122 school year. Sean Bergman, assistant golf coach. A.J. Klausing, football assistant coordinator. David Moore, football assistant special teams. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2122 school year. Jamie Alvin, cross-country. Kate Hagerty, cross-country. Hallie Van Horn, cross-country. And is this Madison? Welcome? And what grade, what are you going to be teaching?
Fifth grade intervention.
Fifth grade intervention.
We appreciate you coming tonight, Madison.
It's always nice to see a face. We're very excited to have you and we hope you have a great school year.
Thanks. I'm excited too.
Good.
Have you just graduated or where are you?
I graduated last year from the University of Toledo, so I've just been doing long-term stuff.
Okay.
Go Rockets.
Yeah.
It's a great way to learn.
Yes.
It's a great way to learn.
Great experience.
That's awesome. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazler?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Five zero. Need a motion for employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Craig, Galen? Recommend to approve Camden Yoder as a classified substitute for the 2021 school year. Recommend to approve the rate of $25 per hour for Shannon Balser as substitute nurse retroactive to the beginning of the 2021 school year. Recommend to non-renew all classified supplemental contracts at the conclusion of the 2021 school year or at the end of the activity. Recommend to approve supplemental contracts to the following in the amount of $750 for summer 21, for the summer of 2021 technology assistants. Jackson Bergman, Brandon Hamilton, and Noah Schaefer. Recommend to transfer Tyler Scranton from part-time custodian to full-time custodian. Recommend to transfer Greg Slattery from part-time bus driver at 1.75 hours per day to full-time bus driver at 3.5 hours per day for the 2122 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Stacy Wagner as bus driver for one hour per day for the 2122 school year. Recommend to approve the following as classified substitutes for the 2122 school year. Becky Bailey, Cassie Brown, Nicole Garza, Aubrey Giddings, Haley Heffelfinger, Becca Joens, Angie Johnson, Pam Payne, John Smith, Nancy Swift. Recommend to approve the updated classified substitute list provided by Northwest Ohio Education Service Center for the 2122 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2122 school year. John Deal, football assistant. Robin Rice, head junior high volleyball coach. Eddie Tunis, head junior high football coach. Brian Wonderley, football assistant. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2122 school year. David Baines, football. Brent Brickell, football. Mason Comiso, football. Travion Tunis, football. Brian Wonderley, football.
Okay, we need to, per Jeff, remove Mason Comiso as a football volunteer.
Okay.
That's not going to work.
Also remove Travion. Brian Wonderley's wasn't there twice. He should be removed from the volunteer.
Yep.
Okay, so remove Mason, Travion, and Brian off from the volunteer section. And then I also wanted to mention that the retroactive $25 an hour for Shannon Balser is, she's been getting paid that all year long. We just never approved that back last fall, so it's just kind of a cover ourselves.
Okay, roll call.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazler?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. And we, nope, okay. I need a motion for the next section?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mindha, Galen? Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Christine Schach as the middle school secretary with 10 years' experience for the 2122 school year. This school year?
Next year.
Oh, 2122, okay, sorry.
So the 10 years' experience is?
From Parker, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazler?
Abstain.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes four zero with one abstention. Need a motion for services and agreements?
I'll move.
Craig?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Steph, thank you. Recommend to approve a memorandum of understanding by and between Defiance College and Hicksville Exempt Village Schools from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 for hosting of teacher education candidates. Recommend to approve a service agreement with the Defiance County Board of Developmental Disabilities to provide educational services from August of 2021 to June of 2022. The district will be assessed 5,000 per student for the excess cost. Recommend to approve quotation for game time for baseball diamond bleachers by National Recreation in the amount of $46,148.72. Recommend to approve the quotation from loop asphalt for parking line playground resurfacing and repairs in the amount of $40,184. Recommend to approve the proposal from Current Services Inc. for reconditioning of the running track surface in the amount of $39,165.
How quickly will they be able to put the bleachers in?
Well, it's eight to 10 weeks right now for delivery.
Okay.
So, okay to 10.
Are we okay continuing to use what we have?
As after tomorrow, if Eric can start this now, Eric and John are going to tear it down.
Okay.
And take them to be recycled or something.
Perfect, good. And I think there's, is there a game tonight over there?
No, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. A striker, I believe I saw. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I'm sure all our baseball families out there will greatly appreciate new bleachers. Okay, roll call.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazler?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion approves five to zero. Now we have the addendum to services and agreements. I need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mindha, thank you. Recommend to approve a five-year lease agreement with Current Office Solutions for copiers as presented.
They came in the cheapest with the quote and they always do. Current Office always does a great job taking care of this, so.
They always seem really quick to get to a school when they need.
Yeah, they are very quick, that's right.
That's great. Okay, roll call.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazler?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. I need a motion for other business.
I'll move.
Galen?
I'll second.
Craig, thank you. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to the following high school students for their superior award ratings at the district science fair. Taylor Early, Joda Freese, Julia Garza, Taylor Metz, Elena Stuckey, Madison Sterheim, and Emily Taylor. Recommend to approve the 2021 list of graduates pending completion of all requirements.
Good job for the kids.
Yeah.
That's awesome. A lot of time going into that.
You know, I just want to give a shout out to the science program in general. We always have a good list of kids every year that go to, go on to superior reading and, you know, move further in the science program, so shout out to all of them. Roll call.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
Carrier?
Yes.
And obviously Steph left, so.
Passes four. Yes, one absent. Need a motion?
I'll move.
Mindha, thank you.
I'll second.
Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve resolution 2021-10 authorizing the 2122 membership in Ohio School Athletic Association. Roll call.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Four yes, one absent. Anything with old business?
Okay, I know we've talked about several different options, but have we come up with a way that we're going to keep trucks off this new road?
Excellent question.
I thought you were going to put the arch at the front.
No, none of that hasn't been decided.
To me, that was the best, whoever came up with that idea, I thought was awesome. I think it was you.
Yeah, my son actually suggested it.
Something needs to keep the through traffic out because they, they, they'll go.
But I wonder if, you know, I don't know, I don't have any idea what kind of cost that would be, you know. Maybe what cost would there be if you put one of those things almost like in a parking garage? You know, those metal steel bars that hang?
I just, you know, that, the Hicksville AC system would just look really neat.
I agree. I just don't know what it would cost.
You know, I don't know if, if that's something that, yeah, four county or Denny, Better, you know, somebody might.
That'd be a good project for somebody.
Definitely.
Good metal, metal fabrication.
You want me to investigate that?
Well, I, I think we ought to be working on something. I mean, it's May and by August, we're not going to want traffic on that road.
I know there was discussion and I know it wasn't a popular discussion, but I really think we should.
Putting that?
No, no, speed bumps.
Oh.
I mean, if not, I mean, that's going to help to slow it down a little bit. I know nobody likes speed bumps, but at the same time.
A couple of them wouldn't be a bad idea.
I don't think it'd be a bad idea.
It's a nice straight shot.
Chances are next year with traffic flow, I'm going to highly recommend that our high school students who park in that lot to reduce the amount of crossing traffic underneath all exit that way. And, you know, imagine being a high school kid in a car.
Ah, geez, yeah.
You need the speed bumps to probably slow them down.
I think so too.
Or a mile down the road trying to slow people down.
Well, and it's a straight shot too. There's no, there's nothing to interrupt the flow.
I was talking to Mr. Walt because I, and again, just, I know this is a discussion. I remember having this conversation before about, you know, are we going to put an arch? Are we going to allow visiting school buses to come down? Do you either put the arch, visiting school buses, all people around, delivery trucks, things like that? I, I thought one idea was to, we're going to do cameras out that way, maybe put a camera out there? I don't, I don't know.
There are going to be, there are going to be cameras out there all along the drive. Well, not all along the drive.
I don't think those will stop semis.
But that's not going to stop semis. What it would do is we could identify through the license plate and call.
We could, yeah, if you're going to give them a ticket.
Huh?
If there'd be a way you could find them, but I don't know that we can find anybody.
Well, I liked the idea of that arch myself to begin with. I thought that was kind of cool.
I mean, the delivery trucks are already using this driveway, so they could continue. I mean, anybody who's delivering goods here to the school now is using this driveway. So they could still use that. They wouldn't need to use the new driveway.
No.
I just, I think that the goal is, you know, prevent that from just being a, you know, a fly-through, avoid part of town.
I know that's a concern for, a long time ago it was as well. That was the best solution I thought we came up with, was putting some kind of an entrance that would. I can certainly get on that right away if you want us to explore that.
The contractors we already have, maybe they have some ideas.
Because we're going to have, we're going to have lights down that, right? And, you know, to have that arch with some lights shining up on it, I mean, it'd look really classy.
Yeah, I like the idea too of possibly that bar also that would hang underneath that. You know, you could have the arch up higher with the bar at a certain.
If not, I'm afraid we're going to be replacing it from time to time.
And you'd need one at this end too.
Yes, we would, the bar. Yeah, at this end you'd have to have a bar.
I'll have to check on that because.
Because that's, to me, that's very important, buses to be able to.
I think so too, because I mean, when our school buses leave to go, you know, drop kids off, bring them, they're going to want to take both roads also, I would assume.
You have to wait bus bar to come here. Sometimes you're waiting to turn.
Oh, yeah.
It's almost six minutes. I was waiting for traffic because you have to wait both ways for the bus to make a huge turn.
Which I'd be curious of the difference, difference between the height of a bus and, you know, a semi. I don't know how much of a difference there is there.
I was wondering that too, Craig, and I don't know, but I'll be checking that out.
But I would agree, it would be nice to get buses through there. I think that makes sense.
Well, if we put the arch, I know Eric wasn't a big fan of speed bumps.
Yeah, I know, because there's no removal and I get that. I mean, I do, but I think in the long run, for the few times a year that we, generally speaking, have to plow, to me, to get traffic slowed down a little bit in a safe way, I think would be better. Especially when they're, you know, when kids are leaving and like you said, you got a straight shot and all the way up to the stop sign. you got a straight shot and all the way up to the stop sign, to get them slowed down before they even get to the stop sign would probably be beneficial too. Not to mention the fact that it's just going to force them, so.
Right.
Okay, Keith.
Yeah.
The average bus is between nine feet and 11 feet, and the standard trailer has a semi 13 feet, six inches.
So you could make it so we could get a bus in, yeah.
Yeah, Pokéokos for a bus and not a whole.
That's what we're for. You've got the semi, he's got the bus off.
I was just going to find both of them first.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever you guys decide on the speed bumps, that's just my, my two cents worth. I'll support whatever you come with.
I, I understand and acknowledge it would be a total pain to snowplow over, but I was 16. I've got a 16-year-old right now, so.
Okay, I'll get on that right away tomorrow, yeah.
Um, we talked last meeting and I would like to remind again, we need to get like a planning session.
Yes, a work session.
A work session, so we can do some long-term planning, especially make sure that all the involved parties.
You want that prior to a board meeting? Or, I mean, after?
It'd have to be afterwards.
You know, Keith, maybe there's a, a board meeting, sometimes during the summers they're a little bit shorter than others. Because personally, this is just my opinion, I'd rather come in twice as opposed to be in here.
For four hours?
For four or five hours, yeah. So, but that's just my opinion. But if there's a time where, hey, the agenda's pretty short, that might be the time to do it.
Okay.
And especially if we can get a list ahead of time of, you know.
Well, what we did in the past is we had people submit topics that they want to cover and we picked three of them.
I was thinking specifically like long-term, the long-term planning of the school, like if the admin team would get a list of, you know, what they're thinking and Mr. Hart and Mr. Overmeyer get a list of what they're thinking, so that way we can kind of get those things ahead of time to look at.
Capex projects, right?
Yeah.
Capital expenditures.
That would be a work session on its own.
Yes, it would be. And we need to do that.
Okay.
So, that way we can kind of think about and digest some of those ideas and kind of prioritize ourselves before we come to the meeting.
Okay.
Sound good? Okay, anybody wishing to address the board?
I've got one thing, real quick.
Okay.
I want to give a shout out to Christine Steeman. You ever, it was one of those moments where I witnessed somebody that embodies the culture of this place. She was carrying, it had been pouring the rain a couple of weeks ago, right? And it was right in the bend and there was a big puddle, like wide, and the parent had pulled up and she was carrying the kid and she stood at the sidewalk holding the kid and she looked down at the puddle and looked up at the car and opened the door and stepped in the puddle with both feet and put the kid in the door, just like a, a trooper.
Who was it?
I took a picture of it. Mindy and I were sitting there picking up Griffin and I was, I was like, I got it.
Who was the person?
Christine Steeman.
Pre-school.
Okay.
I was like, I got to take a picture of this. And I just took a picture of her feet in the water, so.
That's pretty cool.
So, yeah, I thought that was very, because she didn't have to do that, you know?
I would like to give a similar shout out to Mr. Countryman here. Somebody took a picture of him vacuuming.
Yes.